That's your pleasure.
Yes, good afternoon all. I want to welcome you to the August 4th meeting of the Barnstable County Commissioners, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin our regular agenda, I will also ask for a moment of silence. Now, under public comment, and you are here, I know, under public comments, so maybe you'd like to introduce yourself for the people at home.
Sure. Margaret Song, KCP Comptact, I'm the Residential Program Manager. I'm just here to update you folks on the trip that I went to in Philadelphia. I was invited actually by the Department of Energy to speak on behalf of actually nationwide energy efficiency programs and how to work with manufacturers on implementing programs for LED light bulbs essentially.
Great, excellent. And your reception was good?
It was actually. We, all of the folks filled out a poll and we were the second highest rated panel.
Wow, that's very good news. We're glad to hear that.
Good, very good. And you got to see this beautiful city of Philadelphia?
I was mostly in the hotel, but I did get about an hour to walk to the Liberty Bell and back.
Oh. You didn't get the bookings?
No.
Book finders.
They book you, you know, pretty much from the morning till the evening. You really don't get much time to get out.
Well, great. Well, thank you. Well, thanks very much for that update. That's good. And also, under public comment, we have Andrew Gottlieb, our Executive Director of the Waste Water Collaborative.
Yeah, I just wanted to chat with you briefly about some issues that have come up about the ongoing questions about scientific review on the estuaries projects and we've been having some conversations, steering committee level, about appropriate response. And I think Jill is...
Well, we basically, you know, Indy and I have been discussing this on how to address the towns' concerns, and obviously, the question about the science going forward is going to hold up progress. There is a call for a review by the National Academy of Sciences, and that is, you know, there's speculation of how long that would even take. It would take an act by Congress to approve that review, and then there is the issue of cost and timing and that sort of thing. So, I think that, you know, we have to, we have to address the concerns. It's our duty to do so, but if we can do this in a more timely fashion, we can maybe, you know, help the towns proceed without further speculation on the science. So, what we were discussing, and what I think would be a good way to go, is if we could sponsor a scientific review, and it could be tasked to answer the one question, is the MEP approach suitable for developing TMDLs in estuaries of the Cape and in assisting the Cape's water management programs and their development going forward? So, we were thinking that we could, the county could sponsor a panel comprised of unbiased scientific experts in the field, have them come review all of the information, and then hold a maybe one or two day, if it has to be three day review, a symposium with the public to hear the concerns of the towns, people who have been involved, and to take all of that information and review it, and come up with an unbiased judgment on the science. It would help us go forward in this area. Is there something...
Yeah, I mean, I think the idea behind this would be, you know, the county's in a unique position to pull together an unbiased, heart-length panel in a timely manner. You know, we don't know if anybody ever be successful in petitioning Congress to get the money that's been requested by the town of Orleans, if they were, whether the NAS would end up doing the study and on what timeframe, and under those circumstances, it would give it people every reason to sort of stop working while they wait for that to unfold. We don't want them to, and so, if we could do something locally that achieves the same outcome, but does it, you know, cheaper, better, faster, you know, I think that helps answer a lot of the concern that's out there in the public about the validity of the science, and will enable towns to, you know, continue their work relatively unabated and move forward.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the discussion is that they're questioning the science that's coming in, you know, and some of it's, I feel, personality-driven, people, you know, if this person's saying it, is it valid? This way, we could bring in people from across the nation that really do not have any tie to the issue one way or another, and really give a, give a good review and have the input of all of those who have their concerns. So, it would be as though we're just having this review and then we have the review given out, the response. It would be a participatory process.
Bill?
I believe we have assets that are available to us as part of the Waste Water Collaborative, both to pay for a study as well as individuals...
Yeah, you were good enough to provide funding in our budget for estuaries-related implementation issues. So, there's money aside, set aside within the budget. We can do this within our operating budget as it was passed this year to be able to pull this thing together. I expect it's commonplace in the industry for people doing this type of review to expect a stipend to cover their, both their travel costs and their time, because we're asking for reasonable commitment of time. So, we have the funding in our budget to be able to do that, and I just need your authorization to do that work and to utilize those funds for it.
When do you think this will be done?
The goal would be to have it done in the fall of 2010. I don't have a specific, you know, I got a lot of moving pieces to it, but it's something we would get on right away.
Well, our initial thoughtful reaction, I thought it was very thoughtful, to the letter we received from Orleans, since that was the first letter that we received from any of the selectmen, consequently, we received them from the town of Orin and Booster and, I don't know, Chatham and a few others. But our initial thoughtful reaction was that we did not want to pursue their request to have the National Academy of Sciences do this type of peer review. We thought that it would create most likely more problems than it was going to resolve, and also that it would impede the progress of towns that have been working diligently toward developing their own draft wastewater plan. But it also speaks to the fact that if that issue is still out there, and it obviously is, because occasionally another letter comes in from another town, that it's not going to go away. And sometimes, I think it's better to address it as early on than to let it linger and then to have all, and then to have people gain either more buy-in into it, or then you have more people that are going to reject it, so it increases the conflict in the community. So, I think it's a much better idea to go forward with your, with this suggestion that you've come up with, and do it, and hopefully put it, put it to rest, or if it does, as a result, show us a different direction perhaps in how we want to move this forward in the, in the public process or as part of a public review, it might save us more time and money in the long run.
Well, I want to agree with most of what you said. I want to make sure that it's understood that the original letter that we sent out not to ask for the NAS review is still, you know, is still something that we support, that this is a matter of responding to concerns that were, you know, that were put forth by, you know, by several towns. But there were several towns that supported our original position, and I wouldn't want them to think that we were backing off of what we had said originally, but rather to give some, let's say, some support.
You're right. This continues the position of thinking the National Academy of Science review does not meet our needs, both substantively and from a timing perspective, and if this was an alternative, that I think, you know, your political, your political read on the situation is accurate, that, you know, just being, being opposed to an inappropriate solution to the problem doesn't make the issue go away.
That's right.
This is a more constructive, more responsive, less expensive, and more tailored approach to answering those questions.
I mean, it is our duty to respond to their concerns, and there, obviously, there's enough, there's enough weight behind those concerns that we do have to address it, but I think that this is a solution that can be, not only bringing in experts to review the material that's already in place, but to have the input of those towns, so that they're not feeling as though this is being something done and then, again, handed back to them. They can be part of this whole process, and as you say, it could, it could lead to a more comprehensive rollout of how this could be done.
Well, I think too, if the National Academy were to do it, they would do it probably somewhere else and give us results, whereas this way, it becomes a little more interactive. I mean, it's going to, it can happen here.
Well, the intention would be to do it on Cape.
Yes.
And have a two or three do it would be really a conference.
Would have an opportunity to participate, especially, you know, especially those individuals who have expressed some concern.
Well, I think, you know, we have to, you know, I think we've got some details to work on on how we're going to structure the day, so we don't want to set expectations reasonably high, this is, because the point of this is to, is to provide real information on the modeling methodology techniques and their application to people who are, you know, well-versed and qualified and experienced in the field, to give them the opportunity to pick it apart, deconstruct it, and put it back together again, and see how they feel about it, not to have sort of a public food fight over, you know, over it. So, let's temper that.
How long will it take you to put together a proposal?
Well, I'm going to work with Mike Domenico, our CH2M Hill consultant, right away to begin to frame this and put it together. I've already had discussions with the university system, and they're fully cooperative and, you know, will do what they need to do in order to make the presentation of the materials useful and transparent to the review panel. So, you know, we're going to get on it tomorrow.
Okay, so we look at the motion.
I would like to make the motion that would essentially say that Andy should proceed with this, that he should come back to us with the proposal so that we can, you know, we can have one final review of the proposal, and that with the intention that we would go forward to complete this study by some date certain.
Sometime, sometime, yeah.
It's part of your response, you know, put it, you know, put a date certain.
Yeah, we need to begin identifying people and talk to them about their schedules, and there's a lot of logistics that are going to govern when this thing takes place.
Well, I think you have a sense of my motion.
Can you retract the motion? Andy Gottlieb, the frontman, can I read it so that I...
Okay, sure.
Andy Gottlieb to proceed with his proposal to conduct a study of, whether it's a study or a forum or both.
Scientific review.
Yeah, if we could convene a scientific review panel.
Jill's got some good work.
If you have it, you can just hand it to me. Just read it out loud.
I'll read it. Is to directly Water Protection Collaborative to develop and convene a scientific review panel composed of qualified and experienced experts in the field of marine science, modeling, and nutrient management, to review and assess the MEP modeling and sampling protocols in both theory and as applied to the answer, and apply to answer the following question, is the MEP approach suitable for developing TMDLs in estuaries of Cape Cod and for assisting the Cape water management protection process in their development? The collaborative is authorized, we want to authorize them to expend the funds from the municipal services budget, the purpose of organizing and conducting the review panel.
Could we draw my motion and defer to yours? And we'll offer a second to that.
Okay. I'll draw some favor say on. Am I opposed? Unopposed, then favorable motion passes.
I'll be back to you in September, early September, giving an update on where we are.
Great. Thank you. It's good.
Get all that done before you go on vacation.
Yeah.
Okay, next week, we have some representatives here from the Cape Cod Commission, Leslie Richardson, Patty Daly, Nancy, yes, that's right. And Leslie, you're going to begin, we're going to have a, why don't you tell us what you're going to do? We have it on the agenda, but we know what you're doing, but everybody else doesn't.
So, basically, I'm here today to, in full stead, present to you the SED's annual report. SED stands for Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. And in 2009, in the spring of 2009, we completed a five-year plan that is updated on an annual basis. I've put copies of the update near desks, and I'm going to go through a quick PowerPoint just to walk you through the project.
Could you hit the lights, please? They're right next to it. That one, and the one next to it. Thank you.
Okay. So, the SED's, what is it, just to give you a purview? It's both a plan, the document that you have in front of you, and a planning process. The five-year plan was done last spring. We incorporated, we based the plan on the regional policy plan and incorporated the economic development goals from the regional policy plan, which include low-impact incompatible development, the building of a balanced economy, regional income growth, meaning attracting income to the region, and then infrastructure capacity, improving the capacity and reliability of our telecommunications infrastructure in particular. And then regional collaboration and joint commitment was an additional goal of the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, to really put front and center the idea that this is not just a Cape Cod Commission document or a Barnstable County document, but a document that represents all of the different economic development players in Barnstable County. The core or central piece of this document are 16 priority projects. These are regional in nature rather than local, and they, they range from some of the energy efficiency work that the county's already doing through the Cape Light Comptact, to planning projects, looking at our coastal economy and, and the concept of a regional redevelopment authority, to more bricks-and-mortar-type projects, including Open Cape. So, I'll touch on some of those as we go through. But there are two other parts to the SED's as well. One is sort of data research, information dissemination, which is, the capstone of which, I guess, is our STAT's Cape Cod website, and then a targeted technical assistance program for towns, which we've been calling a RESA. The process itself started last, in the spring of 2009, when the five-year plan was completed. It's been undergoing implementation for, we've just completed year one. It's a five-year plan. We evaluated each spring, and then we revise the five-year plan accordingly and resume The process is centered around five working groups that represent different aspects of economic development. The working groups are sector development, industry sector development, workforce development, infrastructure development, business development, so that, you know, assisting businesses directly, and then business climate, which is looking at sort of the regulatory and other aspects of the environment in which businesses work. So, representatives in those five working groups were doing economic development all over the Cape in, in a whole host of different ways, and in many cases, very successfully. But it wasn't a coordinate, coordinated effort. So, through these five working groups, we really pulled everybody together under the umbrella of the RPP goals, the growth policy, and the priorities of the Economic Development Administration, which is the federal agency which we do this plan for. And this was all solidified in terms of the implementation of this plan by partnership between the Economic Development Council and the Cape Cod Commission. Without this partnership, it's far more likely that this would have simply been a typical plan, but instead, we're really, we have focused all of our efforts over the last year on implementation of this plan. So, the annual report. The annual report's made up of three parts. First is the highlights from year one, second is what we planned to do in year two, and then the last is what new regional priority projects were established through the evaluation process. So, the biggest success to date is the $40 million grant from federal, state, and private sector partners to establish the Open Cape Network, and they have started their process. Another major accomplishment is the Ocean DCPC, which will set up a framework within which we can see up to, I believe it's 25, 24, 24 offshore wind turbines. I'm sorry, I'm going in the wrong direction. Entrepreneurial and capital access, entrepreneurship, capital access and training is a project that we've really been a partner in, and the Chamber took the lead on, on setting up an Entrepreneurs Weekend, and then the Chamber and the Workforce Investment Board and the Regional Technology, RTDC, Regional Technology Development Corporation, the Cape Cod Commission, and the Lower Cape Community Development Partnership, all have gotten together to create a team, a case management team, where they take the different winners from the Entrepreneurship Weekend and runners-up, and really walk them through a process where they can access all of the business development assistance that is available on the Cape for entrepreneurs.
When do you want questions?
You can ask some questions as I go.
When they did this last year, there was a, I guess it was a human service group that, you know, that wanted, who wanted this year?
I really shouldn't know that question. I don't know the answer to that question.
And the other question was, how well, how well was this year's attended?
I believe it was very well attended, but I, Dan Dre has been the one who's been coordinating this particular project, so I'm afraid I'm not as well-informed as I could be.
Okay, thank you.
Another major endeavor this year has been working with the Cape Cod Fisheries Trust to obtain EDA funding. That's, that question is still outstanding. We don't know whether we've received funding or not, but we did meet, we had a conference call with the Secretary of EDA on this project, who is very interested in the project. What this project does is it, is it purchases fishing quota, which are now sold on an open market, so large fishing corporations can, can compete with small community fishermen and generally can out-compete them. So, what this program does is it purchases quota and then leases it back to community-based single fishermen, single boat fishermen, so that they can persist in the, in the industry where they might otherwise be priced out of the market. And this project is evaluating its progress over time. It's got funding from a whole variety of sources, this would be just one source, and they're looking at the economic impacts of their program, as well as the social and environmental impacts. So, they're using what's called a triple bottom line evaluation process. So, this is an important priority project that we'll be following, whether or not it gets EDA funding throughout the course of those SEDs. Coastal Use Templates for Economic Development is a planning project that the Cape Cod Commission is, takes the lead role on with the oversight of the Association to Preserve Cape Cod's Business Roundtable. We are doing a series of case studies on the different harbors that you see arrows placed towards Promontown, Chatham, Parwich, Hyannis, and Woods Hole, and that's based on the industries that you see listed along the side, natural resource extraction, marine science, technology, and education, transportation, leisure and hospitality, and arts and culture, which we see as the key industries to the coastal economy on Cape Cod. Each of these different harbors either specializes in one or more of those industries, and so we're looking to see what it is about those harbors that make them appealing to that particular industry, and if it's something that other harbors can build on if they want to attract more activity in those areas. And then, under our technical, targeted technical assistance efforts, we have been working with the Yarmouth along their Route 28 corridor. We did a comprehensive assessment of the corridor from the Parker River area up past Swan Pond through to where, I'm not sure what the cross streets are there, but there's a grocery center, grocery shopping area up there.
I have a question on the, on the side of the development. The Cape Cod Commission did do an assessment of the old drive-in that's, you know, that's on Parker River, you know, that's across from, I guess it's part of their overall estuary. And what my question is, is to whether or not that's included, do they have any specific plans for development? We have, there's an upriver there right now. Is there anything else that's going on in that particular area?
Yeah, that's been actually a centerpiece of this effort. We did a comprehensive look at the whole corridor, but then we tar, we, we really honed in on the, the old drive-in site along Parker's River, where the town has been, for a long time, looking at, digging out a marina for that area, but they haven't been able to get a definitive answer as to whether that will pass, whether they'll be able to get in the environmental permits to do that. So, what we did was to work with them on temporary uses for that property. And again, as a, as a team, with our water resources specialists and our transportation specialists and economic development and land use, we did, we scoped out the whole area, looked at, you know, what the natural resources were, and, and came up with a schematic plan for that that incorporates a whole variety of temporary uses, including trails and playing fields in one area where there's better soils, a farmer's market or arts market area, some just public open space, some decking to overlook salt marsh area.
There's another piece, because they discovered some on the cabin, and there was some concern about, let's say, restoring wetland, or restoring, restoring habit, not habitat, but wetland in that area, and that, at the time, this is a couple years ago, was an impediment to developing property. Does that continue to be an impediment?
I believe that that's part of what's under discussion with the state. And it would not, I mean, the work that we've done is to try and, is to try and help the town think about uses that, that wouldn't come up against those kinds of impediments, so that they could still be using this property as a public amenity.
And if, and if I can just add, to see that presentation by the commission that was brought before the Yarmouth Economic Development Planning Board, it's really quite impressive to think that here's, number one, the Cape Cod Commission working on economic development with the town of Yarmouth, but also the computer graphics and the thought that has been put out with the possibilities that could happen and occur there, and how that could occur through funding mechanisms, it's really very impressive, so we should ask for that too.
Actually, Paul gave us that presentation, sometime, not too long ago.
Well, now, it's really sort of laid out in a, in a computer presentation, and it's, it's really amazing to see, so we should ask for that.
Is this so-called pictromy, pictromy?
Well, this is a schematic drawing that was done by our landscape architects.
Yeah, it's very beautiful.
Yeah, it's really nice.
And is that picture Italy, or is that Cape Cod? Of all that traffic?
That's what everybody going to the Parker River area will actually do our temporary uses.
Okay.
So, another big achievement or ongoing effort, or both, is STAT's Cape Cod. This is now, you can access this from the Cape Cod Commission website now, and it allows you to get data on any county in the United States and compare it to Barnstable County. You can get data on population, on economic data, on industries, employment, a whole wide range of housing and other data, and then as well as along the sides are some helpful resources for people at the town level, at the regional level. level, at the regional level, as they put together grant proposals or work on planning projects. We are currently working with our partners to do town profiles, very similar to the county profiles, and we're probably three-quarters of the way there.
And if we can give Leslie a big kudo on that one, because that was a single-handed effort of getting all of that information. I know all, but last year you were spending a lot of money.
And the year before, you were.
Data collection. Yes, but even all of that data is now in one place, and it's very useful.
Data is a very difficult medium to live on.
Come to learn.
Found through my career, working with too much of it. We also did some good research. We finished this second home survey, which was assisted, we were assisted greatly by the Don Hughes Center EMS. And then, in-house, we completed essentially a manual for municipalities on how to set up arts districts and enhance their sort of cultural assets within town as an economic development approach. So, what do we plan to do in year two? On the Energy Demand Reduction Program, which, a lot of which is really accomplished through the Cape Light Compact, we are also hoping to work in partnership with them and ourselves, our historic preservation specialists, to see about, looking more into how to retrofit historic structures on Cape Cod, since obviously that's one of our major assets. We are also working with a couple of different partners to see if it might be possible to set up a certification program on the Cape for renewable energy, well, specifically for wind turbine maintenance in particular. We don't currently have a workforce here, and we may well need one in the near future. Bi-local Infrastructure Development Program is a collaborative partnership that has been ongoing, and there are quite a few groups that are doing individual projects, and are hoping to collaborate on a regional sort of internet-based system where they can better combine their efforts region-wide. We're going to continue to look at wastewater infrastructure projects and economic centers. This one points to the Parker River Bridge, where we're looking, we're working with the town on flushing studies to see how we can increase the flushing to Swan Pond and Parker River, to increase the amount of nitrogen that can flow through that system without detracting from environmental quality, thereby helping enable some redevelopment to occur in the area, because right now, it's limited by nitrogen loading issues. And then, economic center cost analysis, this is a big, a big issue for the Cape. The growth policy in the regional fossil plan is that we locate new development and redevelopment in economic centers. But the fact is, it's more expensive to develop in economic centers. And so, what this study is about is finding out and better understanding why that dynamic exists, and how we might help rebalance that difference, so that it becomes more appealing for the private sector to redevelop where we want them to do. So, that's a big research project. We hope to have that completed by December.
Do you have a specific target town?
No, we're looking at it in general, you know, so that we can apply it Cape-wide. We may do specific case study, I mean, it may turn out that case studies are the most appropriate way to look at it, but right now, we're doing comprehensive research nationwide looking at that issue. We plan on working intensively with both Bourne and Sandwich. In Bourne, focusing on the Buzzards Bay Area, and Sandwich focusing on the, what's called the Golden Triangle, or the East Sandwich Village Center area, where the town is, currently owns land that they'd like to see developed as a village center. Can't get these buttons right. And then, finally, on Stats Cape Cod, we hope to do the town profiles, and then these are two examples of what's called a dashboard. We hope to be able to build a dashboard that will enable people like yourselves, or Paul Maswick, your director, to look quickly at, you know, what the basic data about Cape Cod is, about our economy, and where we stand, what our employment is, what our major industries are, things like that at a glance.
How does that work? Where does that input come from?
It would come from a variety of sources, depends on what you want on the dashboard. But what we have, I mean, we would probably be providing economic data that is part of the work that we've been doing on those profiles. So, it would be, in many ways, an alternative form of looking at some of the same information. And it would be as up-to-date as we can make the data, so we'd be constantly updating all of our databases. And that's one of the things, we've been working with Indiana, because they already maintain a bunch of databases, so we're building some ourselves, we're working with them to build others. Then, we had the five working groups reconvene and look at each of those, each of their projects, and figure out what the successes were, and where they wanted to go the next year, which is what I reviewed review. But they also came up with some new projects. These are the original 16. There were three projects that really were, they weren't, they weren't moving forward as quickly as they could have been. Let me just show those again. We didn't have any clear individual agency leaders on these projects, so we're kind of putting them on the back burner, and bringing in four new projects. I'm sorry, I don't know why that doesn't show up, the fourth one. But Center for Excellence in Water Quality Technologies was one concept, Regional Information Office, which would essentially build on the Stats Cape Cod idea. Canal Area Assessment and Transportation Improvement Project. And the third one is a zero-waste sustainable communities, or the fourth one, Sustainable Communities Project.
Well, if something to add on the sustainable, I was invited by National Graduate Center.
Yes.
They are, apparently, they're moving forward with a, with a program to look at sustainable issues. And if we're doing this, I guess we ought to talk a little bit offline about how those can work to our constituents' advantage going forward.
Yeah, we've actually talked to the National Graduate School. There's an EDA, the Economic Development Administration, is just issued a request for proposals on triple bottom line modeling, and, you know, setting up something on the lab that people could use as a tool. And we're partnering, we actually signed a letter of support to work with them on that project.
Okay, good. I wasn't aware of that, because I hadn't been contacted independently, because of my association with the Workforce Investment Board.
Oh, yeah.
So, in any case, I'm glad we, I'm glad we should know what each one of us are doing to go forward. It looks like it, I'm kind of excited about it, because it really looks like we will end up with some information that could lead to some sustainable community programs that would benefit all of us.
So, we, in-house, we basically looked at all of our different projects and kind of grouped them under a couple of sustainable communities.
Yeah. You should take the eye out of sustainable. It's a collaboration.
Of course, that would be the one slide that sits up there for ages.
Yeah. Sustainable.
But they do logically group into, into a larger umbrella, sustainable communities concept. And right now, we're pursuing a HUD grant on sustainable communities. And we're going to, we're going to submit a grant that looks at the Route 28 corridor from Hyannis through Dennis, where there are a number of environmental justice communities, or pockets of lower-income resident populations, and look at, comprehensively, from, again, from all of the different perspectives that we have at the Commission, from the wastewater infrastructure, to the transportation infrastructure, to economic development, planning, land use. The other sort of umbrella project is the Center for Excellence, which takes into account several different projects that are going on right now. And we have put together, we put together an RFP earlier, towards the end of July, which we're hoping to get proposals back on on the 13th, that looks at establishing this type of a, well, it really looks first at a regional information clearinghouse, and then possibly setting up of a larger Center for Excellence. So, innovation is really where we're hoping to go in the future, and that's what I have to present to you this year. Any other questions?
Could you put the lights back on, please?
I keep thinking back to the planning conference down in, down in New Orleans, and when we're looking at innovations, how that, how many innovations were being presented from around the world as far as environmental sustainability and protection of the environment, and alternative ways of decreasing use of fossil fuels and increasing alternatives. And it wasn't just wind or solar, it was really in the development and the planning of our land-use existing communities, and how they can be retrofitted, and new innovations. And I keep thinking back to, you were at that, that section that they were showing Copenhagen, where they had vertical gardens on buildings, and what was the other thing where they had it in Dubai, where the umbrellas, what is the name of that? It's not mimicking, where they, it looked like an umbrella, where it shaded an open area, and then at night, those closed down to allow airflow.
Was it in Dubai or Abu Dhabi?
Or was it, you know, somewhere, somewhere there, on the same area.
Well, the idea was that by using the mechanical means, they could regulate the amount of direct, you know, the direct sun field.
Sun coming down, and then allowing.
But the heat sink that, you know, that would be created, which, you know, which especially since the amount of concrete that they were putting in place.
Exactly.
Which was creating this great opportunity for thermal inversion, but this was one, you know, one way of offsetting it without using, you know, water, which is, you know, which is a kind of short supply.
Water, or permanent shelter, so that those shelters could be used during the day and then folded. They would fold at night like little, little flowers, and allow the cooling effect to take place. And so, those are all really great things that we have to start looking at, as well as, you know, solar and the traditional things that come to mind when we're all talking about this. So, I think that that's great stuff ahead of us.
Now, this might be an unfair question, but, and you don't have to really answer it, but the new legislation that's sitting on the governor's desk now, that relates to economic development, there was a piece in the Cape Cod Times today, and actually, Wendy Northcross was quoted as saying, well, not quoted, but that the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce will spearhead the effort in this region, in concert with the Cape Cod Economic Development Council, said CEO Wendy Northcross. Through these, though these groups are already performing the functions outlined in the bill, the new law will make reporting and accountability rules consistent across the regional groups. The idea that instead of all those economic development agencies at the state level, that now there will be like a one-stop shopping, there'll be one agency, and then people who either are business, are in business, or want to create a business, have one place to go. And that regions would be established throughout the state, Cape Cod being one, and for reporting purposes, too, so that the state knows what's going on in the various regions around. So, I just wondered if, in the implementation of this, if you've had even an opportunity yet to think about how this is going to impact us, and with the EDC involved, of course, we should be talking about that, too.
Well, we had, at our, at our spring summit on the SEDs, we had Senator Murray come in and speak about this bill a little bit. And it really does focus on the business development activities of the state, so business retention and business attraction. And at the Commission, we're, we really focus on sort of the framework that the businesses work in, unless I'm working directly with the businesses, but certainly, major partners in the SEDs process have been the Chambers of Commerce, and the Community Development Partnership, Coastal Community Capital, all of those groups that work directly with businesses. So, to the extent that this helps them do their job, it's great. And I know Cape Cod has been different than other areas in the past, and the model of, you know, coming down from the state hasn't always worked for us as well here as it might. So, this, we have an opportunity now to really tailor our efforts to the Cape.
So, there's really nothing adversarial to us about this bill.
I don't think so.
I had a call from someone today about it, and I thought, but really, it's going to, it's going to help the businesses on Cape Cod, which is part of our goal in a certain sense, but not our responsibility, as you, as you say, it's really the Chamber that does so. So, I just wondered if you'd have a chance to take a look at it?
I think the consolidation of, you know, economic development activities is very useful. There are a couple of questions that we've supported, is it Discover Wealthly? My question is, since we're, we're sort of moving the economic development activities under the umbrella of the Cape Cod Commission, what's your, do you have a specific plan for accountability and measuring, you know, whether or not this is succeeding or not? Because it is supporting it, a small Chamber of Commerce activity, from what, you know, from what the president was saying, and I was wondering, how are you, how, how are you going to measure, you know, their success? Is that, do you have some thought, do you have, how do you plan in that, in putting out the support for that? Is there a piece on what our, what our expectation is to measure it?
Well, I know, any, any project at the EDC, you know, any small grant at the EDC issues, they have certain requirements for reporting on results. And we hope to standardize those over the time. And then, certainly, the SEDs has measures in itself that, that look at how well we are disseminating information. And we look at our own website, for example, the Stats Cape Cod, you know, how many hits we get, how long they stay, whether they download information, that kind of stuff. So, I would think that any kind of internet-based activity would have those types of measures available to, you should track about.
And one thing that I would mention, as excellent as this report is, one of the things that I always look for is the fish. Since this report is going out, and the Cape Cod Commission is indeed part of Barnstable County.
Yes.
It would be.
I think I had a fish failure.
If you could correct this, it would, you know, it would be appreciated. I had talked to Paul about it, and he did, you know, I think that, I know that you've already got stationary credit, but between, when that stationary runs out, I hope that you remember to put, you know, put the fish on the stationary, but on reports and when you're making presentations, we don't want the people of Cape Cod to lose sight of the fact that, unlike Martha's Vineyard, the Cape Cod Commission is part of county governing, and part of the benefit that you get from being part of Barnstable County. So, we want to make sure that that's reinforced, and we don't have to remind people. I just spent some time, as National Association of Fine Officials, talking about visibilities at counties. And this is a problem at the other counties, you know, not just here, is to maintain the visibility with the people that they're serving, so that they can, so that they are reminded that the benefits that they get, that they assume comes from either the feds or from the state, actually comes from the county. So, one of the ways of doing that is through brand identification, and to me, that would be having some representation on documents that go out, that, you know, that are under the aegis of Barnstable County, that they indeed mention Barnstable County someplace else.
Yes, that is it. I have always appreciated what an advocate you are.
I have always appreciated what an advocate you are for Barnstable County government in particular. And, you know, we went through a pretty extensive branding exercise this year, and it was, I think, a lot more work than most people realize. So we, we have been making adjustments as we go along, and one of the things that I've recently, in fact, reinforced for people is the need for the county seal and a number of things, including PowerPoints and all. The letterhead, you know, in defense of the letterhead, what we did, we chose in a very modest way, I think, to mark the 20th year of the Cape Cod Commission. Our intention is when that runs out to replace that with the county seal, so I think you'll be happier when that's the case.
I'm not intending you should replace it, because I think it's nice to have a, you know, something that identifies, but at the same time, you know, just some reference on the stationary, that it is, you know, one of the wonderful things you get from Barnstable County.
I do, I do think Leslie's report says Barnstable County.
It does, right? It's approved and submitted by Cape Cod Commission, Barnstable County, Massachusetts. But that doesn't...
I'm taking a location shit.
Yeah, actually, it does. Once I read it out loud, it does look, it does sound like an address more than a...
I understand.
So...
At least I'm consistent with what I've been saying.
Yes, yes. I did mention, yes, the other day, that, you know, all this good work will, will go for naught if we, if we don't have the fish. And, and I agree. I think that we deserve credit for supporting these efforts and encouraging them and backing them up with financial, you know, ability, so.
By the way, good job, Leslie.
It's excellent. It is. You know, this is really, you must be very, very proud of this, after many years of slugging it out there on your own, and able to have really a, a great document to produce with collaboration.
It's great, it's very useful stuff. Good job.
Yeah, I hope that it is useful to other groups, you know, they can cut and paste and steal all they want.
Great. So... Might I just offer an observation? I'm, I've been a staff member of the commission for, you know, some 12 years now, and I think it's really exciting what Leslie and the EDC group have been doing together and Paul's vision for it. It, I mean, it really, I think, does bring a balance to the agency that we didn't have as much before. Just as a fellow staff person, I'm appreciative of the amount of work that it's, that it's been for us.
Well, that's really nice to hear.
That's great. We're all proud.
Okay. That's great. You don't have to have an actual report with you, do you?
There is one here.
One here? Oh, good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Very good.
I think so. No, it's excellent, so...
We always like to hear about the SEDs projects because they're so valuable.
Before you go, Patty, there's...
All right.
Patty, this is, this is a request. I don't have my glasses. Why don't you read it?
He's recommending that we put on an additional $100,000 for set aside for restricted reserve of legal expenses, make the total balance $500,000. The question to come up is that when I was on, you know, observing the Cape Cod Commission, whenever these questions came up, you know, the issue was whether or not the right, whether or not the litigation committee had been, you know, let's say, had been involved in this. I get concerned that this might be in anticipation of increased litigation activities since this supports outside council.
There's been an increase in the legal cost associated with both the regulatory program and legislative activities, which have been very brisk recently, including the ocean management plan and land-based wind sighting and potential changes, significant changes to land use regulation at the state level in general. So that was initially the reason for that request. It's been suggested to me that if the commissioners would like to discuss it further, particularly with respect to litigation, that we should do that in executive session, and we'd be happy to come back and do that.
And I think that might be useful to do.
Okay.
Are you anticipating that we hold the vote then until that occurs, Bill? Or are you going to be moving that?
I don't think, I don't think there's any urgency to, you know, to transfer the money today, unless you tell me that is...
I'm not aware of any urgency to that.
Okay, then I would prefer...
Because we can't do it next week because we have the extension service tour. It'll, it'll have to be the week after.
I think that's fine. Okay.
Table it for two weeks.
Item number six.
Yeah, okay.
And we'll do an executive session on that day.
It's just a matter, in my, in my mind, I'm doing due diligence, you know, to...
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
No, it's not.
Actually, no, it's right up there.
What's on our agenda for the next two weeks? Well, we, next week is the tour with the extension service, and the week after that is the meeting with the assembly in Nauset, the 18th.
It would be the following.
So it'd be the following, it'd be the 25th.
That'd be a good time to come down, huh? The other thing is bad is...
If that's not going to...
Oh, yeah, that's true.
And then if it is...
Eight twenty-four, actually.
What?
Eight twenty-four.
Eight twenty-four.
Okay. We have a 10:00 AM start.
Again, I'm not, I'm not aware that's a problem. If it is, I'll, you know, right away.
I'm sorry, are you saying eight twenty-four or eight twenty-five?
Eight twenty-four.
Eight twenty-four, whatever is a Wednesday.
Is that not the current date?
Wednesday is the 25th.
All right, then.
Oh, that is 25. Well, the 15th.
Okay, so that is a 10 o'clock start?
Yeah.
And on the 18th, it's a...
It is a 3:30 PM start.
We'll go over that at the end.
Okay, good.
Do you want to get a quick update on the DLTA?
Sure. Yes, the DLTA, that's the next...
It's here, it's here.
This year, the state was good enough to include district local technical assistance money again for the regions, and I'm glad to say that's been approved again for next year, so we will have these funds again next fiscal year. But, actually, this runs on a calendar year basis, this program. But in the period of the calendar year 2010, several projects have been approved for expenditures after we received requests from the towns. A couple of them are...
Thanks again.
Thank you. A couple of them are regional, and the first involves 14 of the 15 Cape Towns, and that is to continue our municipal solid waste analysis. And so it's 14 of the 15, Bourne is the only town not participating because they have their own landfill.
Is this the RFP for getting contract?
That's right. So you have just signed an RFP for legal services essentially, and that will be looking for an attorney to help the towns to identify options for forming a district, solid waste management district, and also options for creating a single contract that all of the Cape Towns and perhaps some off-Cape Towns might join in as a way to leverage our negotiation abilities when we look to what we're going to do after 2015 when the CMAS contracts run out. So we're either going to look at forming the district, as I said, or go ahead with a joint contract. It's keeping all that tonnage together and negotiating this as large amount of tonnage as possible should get us a better deal.
Now, was, did you say that we signed that today? Because I don't see this on the summary.
Oh, no, you signed it some time ago. It's actually out on the street right now.
Yeah, right. Because that's, isn't that due to come in tomorrow?
I'm not sure what the due date is. I need to check that. Yeah, it's shortly, though.
So you've been able to manage to get the 14 of the 15 towns together to, and what exactly are you looking, define to me what a waste, a solid waste district is?
Sure. So we did a, last year with DLTA funds, we did the CDM study, which I presented to you, and I said, look, you basically got three options for dealing with your waste after the CMAS contract expires. You can, you can re-sign with CMAS, you can go to the Bourne landfill, or you can basically rail or truck haul to an out-of-state facility. Those are kind of the three options. So the, your contract, solid waste contract advisory committee for the county, looked at that, those results and said, you know, we would like to find a way to really treat our waste as an asset and make sure we hang together and work together so that as a group, as a region, we can get the best price possible for our waste disposal. So the formation of the district, again, came, coming out of the CDM report, was that the towns would create an entity, a governing entity, that would say, we're going to find a facility, and it could be at Bourne, it could be some other property. We would manage the disposal of our own waste, essentially. So each town would become a member, if it were at Bourne, they would be the host community, and they would get a host community fee. This has been done down in Dartmouth, Crapo Hill landfill, I think it's New Bedford, Dartmouth. And they've realized a very significant savings in the per-ton disposal cost by setting up their own district and doing it themselves. And a lot of that's because they accept commercial waste that they charge, you know, a market rate to the fee for, and that subsidizes...
Is that the regional New Bedford district?
Yes, yeah. And Virginia Valley, I love that.
Yeah, exactly.
Extremely one.
I know. It's very nice to have her around.
Yeah, she's great.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's one option, is to kind of form a district and really manage this ourselves, and, you know, clearly there's some market benefits to that.
Not only is there a market, is there a market savings, but how can, is there like a next step where we can actually take our waste and generate energy or something useful of that nature?
The state solid waste plan is out now. It puts some limitations on what you can do, even some of these newer, like gasification technologies. But I think one advantage, I will say, to the Bourne option and forming our own district is that Bournes get the capacity to simply landfill our waste for at least 15 years from all the Cape Towns. However, in discussions, I don't think the towns or Bourne are interested in just doing that. If we did go to Bourne, there are options for perhaps building a material recycling recovery facility or finding other innovative ways of starting to take pieces out of the waste stream and treat them in ways that either create energy or lessen the environmental impacts of landfilling, for example, or incineration. So I think that the district option provides us with a real opportunity to move towards integrated solid waste management and getting to zero waste, that you might not see if we all signed on to a CMAS contract.
So we could really encourage individuals then to be very conscious of separating out...
Well, either way, I think we need to do that. And the one, if we do move towards a, say, we re-upped with CMAS or went to another private facility that incinerates or landfills not on Cape, then we want to make sure that whatever that contract is at the end of the day that we all sign allows us to pull as much waste out of the stream as possible. So A, we're not paying for it to get tipped and disposed, and B, we're increasing our recycling, reuse, and any other benefits we could get out of the waste stream.
So then we can create incentives for the towns to follow through on this.
Will we move towards pay-as-you-go?
Some towns are looking at that. I think, Bill...
I'm sorry, pay-as-you-go?
Pay-as-you-go, that means, so you pay a certain amount for each bag of trash.
You pay, you pay a, let's say, for a ferment.
You buy a bag.
And then you buy, buy bags, and the bags basically are, you know, sold to you at, you know, at the, at the center. But there are no landfills on Cape Cod other than Bourne right now.
Bourne is the only landfill, but towns still could look to pay-as-you-go. And from what I've heard from your contract advisory committee is, you know, if tip fees increase significantly after 2015, which they are likely to do, then towns are going to have to begin to look at things like pay-as-you-go, which is a way to, through, through the finances of it, to encourage pay-as-you-goes, to encourage household trash.
Less, less...
Put less in the bag and recycle more.
Right.
So, you know, you can cajole people, you know, looking at this nationwide, it's really hard to get over, you know, 50%. You know, once you've heard, hit a certain rate of recycling, the ability to get recycling even more gets more and more difficult.
Well, just, just as a point, in Falmouth, you know, there was a fee of $2.50 a bag for anyone who takes their trash to the waste management facility, because the town has curbside pickup for both waste and recycling. So what's happened, the idea was, if you're already, if towns, if the tax, it's on the tax rate, so if the town's already paying for it, the residents are already paying for it, some people don't use it, they were just going to the dump, as we call it, and that was an additional cost, absolutely. So we said, well, we'll charge $2.50 a bag. Well, what's happened is people have started to put more stuff out at the curb. So there's more trash at the curb and more recycling now, because, so it, the, it actually created the incentive to put more out, more waste out at the curb and more recycling. And very few people now are even using the dump at all because of the $2.50. So actually, in certain respects, it was a win-win, except that the $2.50 a bag is onerous, people who still want to go there. But it's interesting to know, and that's the idea of the pay-as-you-go.
And it worked, so it worked.
And it worked in that sense, because there's much more recycling than there was before.
And that is, you know, I related the story in Milton, that, you know, they're given so many bags per household that they can, and anything over that, they are fined for those. They pay for those. So that really motivates people to, you know, be very careful with their trash. And on another note, I was with a, an old friend of mine, and there was a big party going on, and, well, where's the recycle? And this person, just out of principle feels like recycling is just one of those, those yuppy things.
He didn't want to buy into it.
The fan?
He wasn't buying into recycling, which, you know, that's okay, I guess, if that's the way. But there is still that belief and resistance from, from some people, that we have to get out of...
Anything that stays out of the waste stream is something that keeps the integrity of the environment stable.
Yes.
And the idea that, you know, that he doesn't want to participate in the recycling, he's a jerk, or whatever it is.
Well, hopefully he's not watching.
I hope he is watching, because he is a jerk.
Good thing you didn't name it.
Yeah, and it never will.
It's funny, you know, waste is really personal, so, you know, as the towns have these conversa, as you know, as these towns have these conversations, it's going to be interesting to see how they move along.
Well, Harwich has always been number one in recycling on the Cape.
There you go.
Oh.
Yeah, you know, we disbanded the recycling committee, which I absurdly, you're number one.
See, people are getting trained and just doing it as some second, second nature. Excuse me. Another regional project is, it's around nitrogen management issues in shared watersheds. So, excuse me, this is a request from the town of Mashpee, and they have Papanessa and McCoy East Bay watersheds that they share with Barnstable, Sandwich, and Falmouth, depending on the shed. So this is to facilitate a coordinated agreement between towns that share watersheds as to what their percent responsibility is for cleaning up the watershed. So it's a way to really move forward so that towns can agree, all right, this percentage of next-gen removal is going to be our responsibility, you're going to be responsible for the other half, and a way to really move forward and have more concrete discussions across watershed boundaries. Thank you very much to the Waste Water Collaborative for this project. We have funded 7,500, which is relatively small, of commission staff time, and the rest is coming out of the collaborative through Andy Gottlieb and Mike Domenica. We're going to be spearheading those facilitated conversations. So we're looking forward to that.
So it's Mashpee and Barnstable?
Well, on, in Papanessa, Mashpee did the request. It's Sandwich, Mashpee, Barnstable. And then McCoy East, it's Sandwich, Mashpee, Falmouth.
It's important that Sandwich, which is a net contributor, but not, you know, a net recipient, participates. I'm glad, delighted to hear that.
Yeah, all, and all four towns agreed that they would participate in the process, so...
And this will really be sort of a model of looking at how we're going to be addressing wastewater discussions in the future as we're bringing towns around their watersheds as opposed to around their boundaries.
Right.
So that was the whole purpose behind this.
I'm hoping this comes as kind of a model, yeah, that other towns can buy into the same formulas.
Right.
Let's see, and the town of Sandwich, again, in the wastewater mode, this is $25,000. We awarded primarily commission staff time to look at the Golden Triangle, or the South Sandwich Village Center, as they now call it, and identify preliminary options for wastewater treatment there. That is an area that the town's very interested in moving ahead for economic development. There is not adequate wastewater infrastructure. They've just begun their townwide wastewater comprehensive management plan, and they wanted to move this piece ahead before the whole town was done. So we thought that was a valid and timely project, and funded that. In the town of Harwich, we awarded $25,000 to develop a model economic development and management plan for Sacre Tugat Harbor. And the town actually provided a $15,000 match through their DRI mitigation funds to have us study bicycle and pedestrian connectivity... to have us study bicycle and pedestrian connectivity between the rail trail and the harbor and the center. So we're doing both of those projects at the same time, looking at how do you maintain water-dependent uses on the harbor, what might be some of the highest and best uses opportunities for redevelopment, and then you layer on that connectivity plan to get bikes and pedestrians down from the rail trail or other parts of the town, and make the harbor area more vibrant and walkable, walkable and livable.
One of the benefits of that is the access to Sacre Tugat Harbor, that actually go by, where you pick up the bus, the flex line, to go downtown. So there we go. I'm really excited about that part.
Patty, is a possible outcome of that, the economic impacts of having a bike path or a bikeway in the communities, I mean, how would that, there has to be, there has to be some really positive economic development results from that, huh?
You would have thought that the state would have had an evaluation of the impact and viability of the Cape as a destination for bike, for cyclists.
Well, yesterday, they did talk about that when the DOT came down, that was one of the issues.
Yeah, I was just going to mention that, yeah.
Well, you could pull me on that.
Yeah, I'm sure there are studies that...
That would be a good topic for election.
Yeah, I'm sure there are studies that's high.
For communities to see, wow, if you have a bikeway or a bike path, this is, this is an economic driver, and these are some of the positive occurrences that you can either plan, that you should certainly plan for.
Well, it's clearly going to be an economic benefit. And the funny thing about bikes down here, it serves both the tourist community, so it promotes our seasonal economy, but a lot of times people don't think about it as a way to work, you know, to and from work for people too. But as...
Oh, I see those people from Whitsole, every morning going to work on the bike path. They have their back, I know exactly who they are, and they use the bike path to go to work.
What a great way to get to work.
And people work with us, the same thing, because it's right up the street. Yeah, it's amazing.
So, let me grab my water, but one of their initiatives for next year is looking at Cape-wide bike path, and Paul really wants to look at getting bikes all the way from Boston to Providence.
That's what he brought up yesterday, and I was very excited, because my vision is you can get to Pacific Bay on the train.
It would be much better.
And then get on your bike and get down to Providence.
From Sandwich to here would be, same way you can, no way to go.
And the other point that Dr. Gross had brought up was the need of recognizing that bikes can share the road with vehicles. And his great concern was that we don't want to see bikes going against the traffic, because they are vehicles, we want to see them going with the traffic and obeying the rules.
Right. And right now, as we all know, that's kind of a, unless you're an expert in being able to move your bicycle around, and bob and weave can be a dangerous proposition, so.
We're going to try and look at road shoulder widths too.
Right.
And especially for towns that are doing a reconstruction on their roads, you know, periodically, they have to be reconstructed, I mean, you know, when they tear them off.
Went down the wrong way.
Tear them off. That would be the town, if there's enough room in the road layout.
It might exacerbate.
Right.
Something that would be very helpful, you know, in a shoulder width is to make sure that whenever paving projects are part of the mitigation, is that sidewalks or some type of pedestrian bicycle access, you know, is included. The point being that, you know, it's worth your life to go out here in 680, you know, to use a bicycle.
Oh, no, yeah, it's terrible.
And you are prevented from using bicycles on sidewalks. For example, you know, in downtown Niantis, you know, you can't get on the sidewalk, you have to, you know, you have to get on the street. So there has to be some way of identifying a bike path. One of the things that Dr. Gross had talked about was using that standard, was it the bike symbol indicating there was bike traffic?
The share.
For sharing the road. So we need to do more of that.
But the other thing too is that people, towns have to look at their road layouts, because they can't, you can't extend it if you don't have the actual appropriate layout in order to do it. And if you can shorten a traffic lane, which sometimes can be done, which gives you that, we went through that over 28, you know, with the states now redoing 28, the whole idea of expanding into the road layout, but, and then shortening the traffic lane, wow, that didn't go too far with the state.
But anyway, and is it August 12th they rail, I mean, a bike day at the commission? Aren't they doing, aren't they doing a promotion of bike, bike usage at the commission on the 12th, I think it is?
We have an open house on the 12th from 1:30 to 4:30. Talk about all things transportation, the regional transportation plan update, the tip, the work plan.
We're both.
At the commission.
It'll be in the conference room.
In the conference room?
Yeah.
August 12th?
Yeah, 1:30 to 4:30. Invite anybody to come by.
What time again?
1:30 to 4:30 on the 12th.
1:30 to 4:30.
Yeah.
And that's on transportation?
All things.
All things, all things transportation.
No, the hearings have not been well attended, but they have been covered. So hopefully, you know, some of the media on Cape Cod is promoting, you know, the fact that we are reaching out in the hearing process to get as much input as possible. Last Monday, I was listening to XDK, and the hostess was complaining because she'd gotten stuck in traffic going, you know, going over the bridge on Sunday. So I called in and suggested that instead of whining about the problem, that they could show up at the hearing and have some input on it.
And are you leaving?
Human Services Advisory, sorry.
If I could, just quickly, because Bill Clark asked me if I could, Madam Chair, just digress a little bit, if you're attending next Wednesday's commissioner's meeting and the field trip?
Yeah, I am not, but we're going to cover it out now.
Okay, just, we're leaving, there is a bus meeting here, but you need to be here by 8:30, both of you, if it's being filmed and if you're going to be here.
It is.
And it leaves at 8:30?
It leaves at 8:30. So you should get here about 8:15, whatever, just because they're leaving from here, and then they're convening at the county fairgrounds.
Suggested ending time back here.
The end time, we should be done by 1:00. We have 11:45, we have a presentation and lunch, I couldn't miss it, Farm. So if you didn't want to stay for the luncheon, you know, but the bus will take you back here till probably 2:00.
I'll have to find a bicyclist who recovers.
Yes.
Where's the advisor being held over there?
I think it's the Human Services, the Human Services Committee of the Assembly.
Oh, or the, oh, that one you're talking about?
Thank you.
Okay, good, all right.
It's a fun letting you know before I lost you, thanks.
Okay, good.
So anyway, to keep that thought, they did have, there were some suggestions made about integrating the business community, you know, for example, hotel and restaurant, especially hotels in the north, there's some type of incentive to extend stays over weekends that might help reduce the amount of traffic. There's also, you know, there's also some, and I did bring that up, you know, give testimony on that on 28, but the other piece was to go town by town to find out whether or not there's any appetite for changing the day which cottages are transferred, because right now on Saturday, that's, you know, becomes a horror show, because everybody's either coming or going, you know, on Saturday morning, and that, you know, that contributes to it as well. When you go on an airplane, it's very easy to get on the airplane, because they sort of move you all in, you know, and staggered in, but it's terrible to get off, because you now have to wait for everybody to unload before you get off. It seems to me that this, you know, this scheduling issue is one that we need to get some help from the community on, in order, you know, let's say, in order to get past.
Excellent thoughts.
Maybe they could even, I got, that question has come up so many years that you just think, but even if they had two different dates, one did it on...
Saturday afternoon.
Well, Wednesday and a Saturday or something, or a Tuesday and a Saturday.
Well, that's part of the thing.
And people could choose one or the other.
Give them a working...
Yeah, it's the work.
I know, it's not going to work.
I don't know if it would volunteer.
Or a year that it begins to make that change, because right now, you know, it's, you know, it's kind of overwhelming, you know, to get everybody to change, because you make these commitments to rent in the wintertime, when, you know, when you're not thinking about the traffic, and then, you know, then you think about the traffic. So there needs to be some working with the business community, especially in those...
Maybe it would be to get a couple extra bonus days for half price or something. Don't forget to, you know, miss the bridge traffic, stay two extra days, pay half price.
Yeah.
Quickly.
Yeah.
Chatham, we're doing some visioning work in West Chatham along Route 28. They're looking at, and this is, you know, George Ryder Road, around where the new job lot is. So looking at the land uses around that section of the highway, they're looking at redoing the highway section as well, so we're coordinating that effort with DPW there.
What are they intending to do with it?
They need to do, they wanted to do some streetscape changes there, and then they want to look at the land use around there. And essentially, the town started this effort about a year ago. There's a significant division among some of the residents who live around there or are interested in the area as to what the vision should be. So they asked us to come in and help kind of do charrettes and work with folks and try and refine that vision.
Because there's a post office there, and there's, you know, there's some commercial office space.
Shop a boy across the street, I think.
Well, that's a fairly small one, but the post office and the, you know, job lot, and then you've got the, you've got the, let's say, those offices, a couple of attorneys and some real estate, and you've got the gas station on the corner.
Right.
So that's always a, you know, how do you, you know, how do you sort of compact that? Because you've got this enormous parking lot, used to be the A P, so how, you know, how are you going to do that? So that's...
So that's, that's the point, exactly. Oh, another regional project, which is the Regional Assessing Services, this unfortunately is still sitting on my desk, but I have had the opportunity to talk with several assessors, and I think that they're on board.
I'm glad you brought that up, because...
The scope.
I'm just...
On board with the scope finally, and that should be coming to you hopefully next week for signature Gladys and Harvey.
NACO, it was the representatives of the National Assessors Association.
At NACO.
At NACO. And what they, what they told me was that you can have access to a lot of their, their information at their website without being a member of the Assessors Association. And part of that is some information on what, you know, some of the tipping points are with regard to, you know, the population sizes that makes sense for consolidation.
Excellent.
So it might be useful. I have it in my office all day, I'll make sure, you know, get it in the mail to you or drop it off.
That'd be great, I appreciate that. Just, you know, through my discussion with the assessors and then the town managers and administrators, there are two different kind of goals for this RFP that have come out of this. So it's three things. One is to, how do we best standardize assessors' data so at a regional level we can all use it in a seamless way? Secondly, what changes at DOR or in other state regulation or law would be beneficial to Cape communities in terms of making us more efficient, a little less red tape for assessors doing their jobs? And then third, what are the options for consolidation at the, probably at the subregional level for sharing functions? You know, are there opportunities, say, with the state appellate tax board, to have one representative of all the 15 towns that could go up and just do that in Boston as a example? So that should be coming to you hopefully on Wednesday, next Wednesday. Let's see, two more. One more. A smaller project, this is 7,500, Eastham and Wellfleet Shared Economic Services. This is to put together a website to help to draw folks to Eastham and Wellfleet on and off season, and really as a way of kind of consolidating the opportunities available out there.
We saw that last week, just over Wellfleet.
And that was the question I had about how we would measure the success or not.
So, and that one would probably be hits. I need to talk to Paul Seelof and see how it's going.
Tell him to have a direct contact, a direct connection to getting the flex room and not having buried in services. We've got this bus service, you know, to go down Cape.
Direct link to flex.
Well, just to say, I mean, today I was coming up, and the traffic of people coming, and I don't believe since today is a Wednesday, it was on-off traffic of people moving, but people wanting to come to the Outer Cape beaches stemmed bumper to bumper from pretty much the rotary, maybe, maybe a quarter mile up from the rotary in Eastham, all the way through into Wellfleet. I mean, all the way to the very end of Wellfleet, it started to break up a little bit as it was approaching Turo. So on those hot sticky days, when everyone is sitting there trying to get to the beach and looking at all those cars with all that fume, it was just, number one, I was really glad I was going in the different, in an opposite direction, but it was, but that will be now going off, you know, off the Outer Cape later on this evening.
Brother was probably wanting to go to that French paper too.
Well, that, yes.
I couldn't even get to that the other day.
Your daughter really promoted me on getting the fig bread, which is delicious by the way.
Yes, oh, so she told me that you were in there, so. And I, and I just, speaking of that lovely girl of mine, I want to wish her a happy...
Hardworking.
She's very hardworking. She's the breadwinner now of the family, and, and I want to wish her a happy 18th birthday. She and our president are born on the same day, so happy birthday to my, my beautiful baby girl and to President Obama. She reminded me of that.
You could say her name.
Sarah, Sarah Lyons, who is my greatest achievement, in spite of myself.
That was just one of the great...
Yes. Thank you, Bill.
Wow, that was great, Patty. Yeah, that was really a good update on what's happening, yeah, and how those DLTA funds are being used, and that's wonderful. And to know that we'll have them next year as well.
Yeah, which is fabulous.
That's great, yeah, help us achieve our goals here. Good, thank you.
Yes, and you know, the other, the other great thing is that because we were able to give D LTA funds last year to the towns so that they could conduct, you know, other similar studies on regional efforts, the town of Wellfleet actually had that extra money to partner in this economic development initiative, which will really make, you know, it's really bringing East, Wellfleet primarily in lead of economic ingenuity and innovation down there of how we can, I think the original title was a Wellfleet for All Seasons, or something of that nature, which is really what they're trying to promote. So, I mean, it was just another, here's another benefit of being able to do these types of studies, so it's great.
I'd just like to, just two more things. Last year, we funded the study of police and dispatch consolidation, and Eastham, Wellfleet, and Orleans are all meeting on a monthly basis to follow up on that report, which is fabulous.
That's excellent, right.
And secondly, there is a regionalization conference on September 2nd in Worcester again.
Yes.
I just signed up for my workshops today, actually.
Yes, I have to, oh, yes, 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 I have to do that.
Teed that up. You're all set.
Going to.
Sheila, that I had to grab. All right, thank you.
Okay, Patty, long time. Good.
Which ones did you go to, so we're going to be, because it would be good if we went to different ones.
Yeah, I did, um, wait a second. I'll do some kinds of museum. I did this one here on the afternoon, and for the morning I did...
What did I send you?
This one, four.
The innovation, okay.
I did four and two.
Okay, good, so then I will do...
All right, you're next.
Thank you, Patty. Hi, Patty, thank you. If I may, would I ask to remove your summary of items with the exception of number six, which was tabled until the August 25th meeting.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, afores, no opposed, two in favor, motion carries, you're done with these?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, Phil Moon and Sheila. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for letting me.
I just would like to, because this is a T F school, we'll be agenda one more time. Next week, August 11th, I, we have our annual cooperative extension tour, and 8:30 from here, and I was asked, Bill and Sheila, will you be on the 8:30 bus, or are you planning just meeting at the fairgrounds?
I am going to have to meet you at the fairgrounds, because I have a meeting at 8 o'clock that will probably take me about 9:30, so I'm going to need someone's cell phone to...
You should copy the schedule, that's where we're supposed to be.
Okay.
You can always call Mark or myself or...
Right, because I know it runs a little slow because of traffic.
And how about you, are you going on the bus? Are you going?
Okay, and I'll go on the bus.
I won't go on the bus, because you're there.
Okay, so that's next week, agenda. The following week, the 18th, is the annual assembly meeting at NOSET. I recommend that you meet at 3:30 to open your meeting and sign your documents, and then Kevin will be giving a presentation. So there really is, how it has worked in the past, is the three of you sit up, you don't give an update, you turn it, or you have a very brief update, and turn it over to Kevin for his energy efficiency update. I'll be there as well, but I'm, Kevin's going to have Kevin running the program, and then after that, they do their meeting, and then there's John Omen hosts, hosts both. The 25th, you're 10 a.m., Human Services Advisory Committee meeting, that's the posted agenda item as of now.[1787.12]
I'm sorry, what is the time?
About 10 a.m. on the 25th. I hate to say it, that's the end of August.
Yeah. Oh, my God.
Yeah, I just got the removal for Barnstable for Sunday.
So I, the only item that I have is an executive session personnel matter. So if there is nothing else from you, I would, I'd like to turn over to you guys, or I'd ask that you go into executive session to recess.
I just want to mention that, you know, that I've given you a copy of the NACO report. I wanted to make sure that you didn't miss anything there.
Such as?
Such as, if you have any questions, we've got any other details, you know, those pictures with the showgirls were, I didn't participate in that.
Yeah. I thought I saw you in there, with your legs kicking.
I did for the whole department.
All right, so I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session, move to executive session, and then we will then move to recess until we come before the assembly.
Second.
Okay, by roll call?
Lyons, aye?
Lynn, aye.
Darty, aye.